Please. Okay, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. We do have one change. We amended the agenda to move back interviews to 10:30 instead of 10 o'clock. Give us a little more time.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we accept the amended agenda.
We have motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We do have a board of ambulance to start off in our claims.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we enter into the board of ambulance.
We have motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is a pretty simple claim.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the ambulance claims and exit the board of ambulance.
We have motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next we have our regular claims. I did have a couple of questions. I'm gonna talk to Christie, she got them answered. So, any questions, any concerns?
The one of the questions was, we paid State Department of Department of Bag for animal damage control, and it's just an annual like $3,000 dues. And then the other one said medicine for a juvenile resident. It wasn't a connection. Was it really medicine? What kind of was?
The way it was worded, it made it.
Yes.
I wondered if we was distributing drugs.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the claims as presented.
We got more.
Oh.
Here.
Okay.
Well, that's the commission report.
Commissioner, we'll do the commissioner report.
We have motion all in favor, say aye.
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 So, here are, currently we have the, without, along our board members, Jamie's been signing on the fair invoices, and she's authorized to do so. So I'm going to have the board sign those invoices to formally approve them, and they're by bundles because some were last week and some were in this week's. And then, if the board wants to make a decision, to decide who could potentially sign for invoices, it could be Jamie, we can have Scott do it, we can go back to the fair board doing it once we appoint a board, or however he's allowed to do it.
At this stage, I would say, fair invoices, we can get Jamie the authority to do that because she's more familiar with that than Scott.
I would like Scott to approve them. Jamie, and the only reason why is, I want to make sure that Scott is involved with some of these purchases, to make sure that they're moving forward.
Are these for the fair that has already occurred?
It's gonna be fair stuff, it's gonna be regular day-to-day maintenance stuff, too.
Okay, and the day-to-day maintenance stuff, I think, obviously, so, just for...
And that'll just be until we get our fair board set up, but I want...
And then he can always act as a secondary backup signature if we make it stop.
Okay, my concern was if they were all just strictly fair stuff, that Scott wouldn't have the detail that Jamie would, but, okay, I understand, so I'm good with that, and so...
So I'll get the authorization together today, so we'll just sign these, I'll get that authorization, we can just do that next week.
Do you want, can we approve the authorization so we don't have to wait another week to...
Well, I'll just have you sign it on Tuesday.
Yeah.
But however he would like to do it.
Today's Friday, so...
That'll work.
Okay, yeah, I'll just try to be efficient.
Yeah. And I think that might be, well, actually, why don't you go ahead and make the authorization, as soon as I get you the authorization, you can sign it, because I don't know that that would be on Tuesday's agenda.
Oh, okay.
And then Christie won't have to agendaize it.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Is that for the invoices, or is there more?
About one more.
Not nervous.
A whole pile here.
Let's make, oh, I was just doing the top one that we saw.
Not just one, not a...
Let's separate these out real quick, then. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the fair board invoices as presented, and authorize Jamie, or Scott, excuse me, authorize Scott as signature on these invoices until further notice.
We have motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The last one I have is, I've got, I've got two invoices, actually, for Long Park Congrats Architects. It's for the forensic pathology design for the building. The total is 100, well, there's one for $96,000, and there's one for $14,000 and change, for a total of $110,695.71. Do we want to pay this, we have some money from the state of Idaho that we can use to pay this. There's $811,000 left over from any expenses we currently have. The original intent was to pay for the building out of ARPA funds, but I didn't know...
Can we hold off on that until Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like to do, I would like to do that.
I will put that to Tuesday.
Hey, is that all our invoices, then?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, I'd move...
And can I get those back, though?
The fair one.
Just because...
You separated?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the remainder of the invoices as presented.
We have motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next we have certificate of residency.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the certificate of residency as presented.
Have motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we have alcohol licenses.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the alcohol licenses as presented.
We have motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye. The green triangle, I thought that was gone, how was the gold, golden nugget?
Okay. Which, I found out last week that that is the old green triangle, has the same menu and stuff inside there. It's the Travel Lodge. It's inside it, which I was, thought it was interesting after all our other deals, so I heard they had good food, so I may have to see. But it is the same people that had the green triangle now. Anyway, next we have salary rate approval forms.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
Have motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, I'm just gonna go ahead and bump you up, Braden.
Okay, you want Christie to go first?
No.
Okay. Um, well, we have Dottie Owens here today to pull over all of our findings and present our information...
Come on up, all of you.
Making the case for the forensic pathology project.
Good morning.
You're supposed to sit right now.
I know why. I watch enough of these.
Tori, come on up.
JR, come on up. There's chairs for everybody.
Good morning. I'm, thanks for letting us come in today. I'm, just an update, so we've had some major challenges on finding a doc. Oh, go ahead.
Let's go around the table and introduce ourselves for the record.
Uh, Dottie Owens?
Sam Biedekofer, Madison County.
Tori Danner, Benning County Coroner.
Lucky Warren, Menidoka County.
Craig Ryan-Hart, Casser County.
JR Frunt, Chief Deputy Coroner, Bann County.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we've had some difficulties, and, I'm, a couple of different things that I did bring to Jeff and Braden's attention. The listing itself, I'm, I've had a couple of people, and we've discussed this a couple times in the last week or so, and then the last few days. I'm, I went looking for our pathology listing and couldn't find it. Tried to get onto the Bannick site to pop in to actually do, to see, like, I was going to apply for the job, and it wasn't even on the site. So I couldn't find it. And, we relisted it, and I talked to Braden, and he said that he was pulling it every three weeks, right? And then relisting it, so I don't know if I got in to check it, but I've also had a couple of docs, one yesterday that I was talking to, who said that he had just seen it posted Friday. So there's that, I don't know if that's part of our, our problem is that it's not been sitting on there consistently. And, the other thing that we've had, I've had a couple of calls from various forensic pathologists, and, one this last week called me on a different project that he wanted my opinion on. He is based out of New York, and his comment to me was, I hear what, you know, that you're hiring for Eastern Idaho, and then he proceeded to talk to me about the fact that it's really hard to get a forensic pathologist and get established when we don't have, we aren't, the facility isn't, isn't stood up. We don't have a location, we don't have, you know, and so, I've, I've been asking around a little bit. I had a gentleman that reached out to me a couple of weeks ago that I've worked with, her name, he's military, he's a military forensic pathologist, asked us about the position, and, I'm, you know, unfortunately, they're just not willing to commit when we, we really don't have anywhere for them to go, so to speak, right? Because what we're talking about is leaving careers, selling their homes, moving their families, that kind of thing, and, I'll tell ya, I've not ever met one that was happy working in a hospital setting, it just doesn't work. And then you end up with your hospital lease ending within, you know, months or years, and actually, Ada County used to do that. We were leasing with, you know, pre-Erwin, or Erwin days, actually, leasing with Saint Al's, which is how Morris Hill came to be, because Al's all of a sudden popped up and said, no, we're not, we're not doing this anymore, we want our space back, you have however many, you know, years, months, whatever, to, to relocate. So, that's been an issue. And, the wages, I'm, I'm getting compliments on the fact that they feel like the wages are very competitive, you know, are competitive. There are about 65 openings nationally, and a lot of the reasons some of those folks can't fill the jobs is because the wages are, you know, 240 to 260 to 280 range, they're, so for that position, they're, they're pretty low. And, as an example, I've got some folks in South Carolina, they're very good friends of mine, and she has been looking for the last eight month, eight months to about a year and a half, and she's starting at 260, 280, she can't get anybody there. And, I do know that Texas has started hiring at 500,000. To me, and I've never seen that, that is just, it's unbelievable. And, so we're kind of right in the middle, which is good. The good news on this is, I have had conversations with one of the docs, who's coming in on Monday, very, very interested in the position, something that he is looking for, and, you know, to be honest with you, I don't think he would be coming in on Monday to meet with us if, if it wasn't something that he was really considering doing for us. So, you know, that's, that's looking good for us.
Thanks. Let's hear your comments, I mean, you all come down to talk, let's, let's hear your feelings and thoughts.
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
My county size is about 22,000 people, and I deal around 60 to 70 cases per year. Autopsy wise, I ended up, my biggest year has been eight autopsies in one year. I was very excited to hear that you gentlemen were pursuing this forensic pathology center simply because of the drive time and the convenience it'd be for our county to come to Pocatello instead of having to go to Boise. If, you know, the cost is reasonable, which I'm sure Dottie is totally aware of, what all the other counties are doing, uh, yes, we would, and I've talked to my chairman, Wayne Shank, on numerous occasions, we would be very supportive of this center if it gets opened up. So you can count on Menidoka County to be one of the, you know, supporters.
Casser, we've got about 25, 26,000 population. Historically, five to six autopsies a year, my highest has been 10, my lowest has actually been this year with one. But we would, we're just excited about this, if we can get it going. We'd love to come here to have our autopsies, again, convenience, because it's an hour and a half shorter drive, and it just works well. And our commissioners, every department head meeting that we have with our commissioners, they ask me about this, and want to know when it's going to go, so, and I say, we're working on it, and I, I try to keep them updated. Dottie keeps us all updated and lets us know, so, we are very, very interested and very much supportive of it.
Well, I'm sure you all got the contract that we did, too, just here lately with Ada County.
Yes, 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 and it, it went up.
It went up, and, so we're, we're interested.
Well, thank you for this time, I'm from Madison County. Our population on the 2020 census was around 53,000, I think, we increased a little bit there. I look at the growth in our county. When that 2020 census came out, we had 41% growth in our county compared to the previous 10 years. And I look at the growth in the state of Idaho, if you look at the top eight counties, five of those counties by population are in southeast Idaho for growth, you know, we have Ada Canyon and Kootenay, which are our top three population, and then you have Bonneville, Twin Falls, Bannick, Madison, and Bingham, we're the next five counties. And, we're all experiencing that, you know, that growth, we're trying to, trying to plan for that, and, Madison County, we've been excited, you know, it's been, it's been a little while since we heard about this, and we've been very excited. You know, for us to do an autopsy, we have to plan about a two day, it's about two days for us to do that, because we have to drive, you know, four, four and a half hours, the day before, spend the night, spend, um, I meant to turn that off, sorry, spent time doing the autopsy and then come back. So this would be very convenient for us, and we would support this 100%, our law enforcement, you know, we're all struggling with fentanyl in every one of our counties, I know that Bonneville County kind of bounces back and forth as the number one kind of county that has that, and other counties, so, I know that all the way through, even behind us, Fremont County, they have a huge population of tourism that comes through there for West Yellowstone and, and different things, and we all kind of weigh that, like, okay, we could do an autopsy, or we could try to figure this out the best that we can without that, because we're all kind of balancing that back and forth, but if it was closer, we could do, and we would do more autopsies. I know from our county, we're very supportive of it and very hopeful that this will continue to move forward, and, we know that there's probably gonna be struggles, this is brand new, right, for our state and, and having one on our side, but it's, but it's something that I think that we, we need very badly, especially with the growth that we are all seeing in all of our counties, surrounding counties, you know, on the east side and everything, we're, I don't think that's gonna stop. You know, we have, you know, we have that Daybell Vallow case in our backyard that we look at all the time, and it's changed, it's changed a lot of what our law enforcement does, and, I've been able to stand back and look at that and, and assess how we do things differently, and, and we always have to be trying to do things better, be learning better, be training better. And I don't, I don't, I think this would not only allow us to do more autopsies, but it would allow us to have a, a training center also for future use of coroners and deputy coroners to be able to see and, and understand the importance of how this could affect our counties and, and even our, you know, our cases that move forward. So, we appreciate the opportunity to come down here and discuss this and talk about it, and hopefully garner, we're all in support of it, hopefully garner support moving forward for this.
Thank you.
Tori?
I think as far as being convenient, you know what I mean, not having to drive to Boise, I definitely support it, I think it's a fantastic opportunity to be local. As far as the rest of it goes, I think there's still more information to come that we're waiting for, too, right? But as far as that goes, yeah, I think it'd be awesome to do it here.
I refer to my coroner.
There's a wise man. Okay?
All right, couple of questions real quick. Has Dottie talked to you guys about the subscription model that we're talking about with this?
Yes, she has.
What's your thoughts on that? Because the idea behind it is to remove that cost barrier that you, you're able to budget a certain amount every year, and then based on your population, do a certain amount of autopsies based on that. So we're trying to remove that barrier of, we only have so many dollars in the budget. What's your thoughts on that model?
I've discussed that, I hope that it don't get in trouble with, with my chairman, he likes the idea because it'd be easier budget-wise if we, you know, budget that amount, and then, you know, at the end of the year, we talked about, well, we've gotta be able to review it to make sure that if we go over, then, we don't want to cheap Bannick County out of the money, but we've gotta be reasonable for our county on how much we put out. We like the idea, if we can structure it to where, you know, it's beneficial for everybody. You know, I'm just like everybody else, my population is growing, we've got so many subdivisions going in right now, I wonder where they're gonna find the people to fill them, but, California. But we're all growing, Idaho's growing, and, you know, I can't stress enough the, how convenient it will be for us, you know, to come this way instead of going to Boise.
Good. Any other thoughts on that?
I think it's a good idea, and, it's a, it's a great place to start, and if we start going down that road and we realize that it, you know, that it's not beneficial for everybody, then I, you know, it's a good time to stop and reassess and see where we're at, but to start out, I think it's a great idea to be able to have that. And, and I know that, you know, the state of Idaho is, is looking at the coroner elected position and looking at the coroners as a, as a whole, and there's some talk about, you know, mimicking what the state of Washington has been doing, which, you know, if a county is accredited, then the state would reimburse those autopsies at the end of the year type of a thing, and, that's been talked about, we, I'm not quite sure where that's gonna go, but, I think this is a great starting point to see how it works.
See, and that's one area, since we've even started talking about this, I mean, we started this in 2019, the first conversation started, and, and a lot of conversations were to get the state more involved and stuff like that, so, the more counties we get involved, the more your representatives get, you get involved with your representatives, then we can move forward in a, in that manner that the state dishes out more funds towards this that has better coverage in, and actually, regional areas that we could have these offices to take care of this problem or concern.
Well, I think it's gonna professionalize the industry and our state as a whole. If we can, and I'm hoping that that's where that goes.
Yeah.
And, I've talked to them several times as well, and, if we can change our statutes so that our counties are getting accredited, but then with that accreditation at the end of the year, those autopsies are, autopsy and tox is reimbursed by the state, so that there's a little bit of motivation to get some of our jurisdictions that, that aren't doing just your basic death investigation kind of off their rears and doing what they should be doing in their communities for their decedents, right? And so it's gonna professionalize the whole entire thing, and that's, honestly, that's where I'm hoping that it goes, and I think pushing for that's, you know, what we all need to do.
Another thing, too, I know he does it, but, when it comes to drug cases on the federal level, if we have a drug case, or a case that we think it's drug-related, and federal steps in, they will not prosecute without an autopsy. So, that's another thing that we've got coming down the road that we've gotta start looking at as coroners. You know, the budget, if we end up, you know, with deaths that are fentanyl-related, and our local authorities turn it over to the feds, we've gotta realize, we've gotta do autopsies, because, you know, I mean, this comes from my prosecutor, that he says the federal will not prosecute if we do, do not do autopsies, because they've gotta determine, was it the drugs that killed him, or something else that killed him?
I had five fentanyl cases last year, and I had to take every one of them to Boise for autopsies, and it was the fentanyl that killed them, it was not a medical condition or other condition that killed them, so, and, again, my prosecutor's the same way, you will take them for an autopsy, no question, just, if you think you may have it, do it. So, that's why my autopsies have gone up usually, and my costs have gone up with that as well. My budget raises every year.
We joke all the time, all the druggies go to his county and says, "Why?" They cross the river.
Fine line right there.
Yeah, yeah. Cross the bridge.
Yep.
Well, one of the things that we were waiting on, and I'll pass those out, is some construction numbers, and we, I'm chuckling, because the final one came in while we were sitting here from Hal. So, these numbers are fairly hot off the presses. And, the original drawing that we received back from our consultant, when we were looking up at ISU, was about a 10,000 square foot facility, and, as you're all aware, that was a very large price tag that caused us all to step back and, and rethink things, and since that time, we've been working a lot to bring that cost down, and then we made the decision to move it to our own property, we had the, the designer go back and do a little bit of work, and so, what you have before you is the, the proposed square footages that we have, and I've, I've made the commitment to try to do this for three and a half million dollars, opening the doors. And so, yesterday in meeting with Dan, who is our building, building guy, and Hal Jensen, our, our planning and zoning director, we sat down and went through all these numbers, and both of those guys, I want to give them a shout out, and thanks for all their hard work to get us to this point, but the numbers that you see before you are pretty, pretty, pretty spot on, pretty spot on. So, the, the drawing that we have currently is about a 7,000 square foot facility, and in talking with Dan yesterday, he said, you should build it bigger, because we could use the space, and he talked to some things that Tori's talking about for some additional space, and things the sheriff is talking about for some additional space, and so Dan made the comment, we should build it bigger, and I said, I will not advocate for that, because I've committed to a 3.5 million dollar budget, so that's why you see the 6,000 square foot building on here, because that stays within the budget that we talked about. If Dan committed, that if, if he was to be our general contractor on this, we could do the 6,500 square feet and possibly even the 7,000 square feet and still hit that 3.5 million dollar budget. So that include, as you see, that includes the site work, the shell will be a metal shell, it'll be a metal building on the outside, professionally finished on the interior, up to medical grade, and the equipment is, again, hard numbers from, from Dottie, so, the numbers you see before you on the construction estimates are, we've been working on for about a month now, and, that's where we're at. In fact, I was, I was laughing, because Hal sent me a text literally as the meeting started, and he said, just heard back from my site estimator, the dirt work came in at 487,950, so my 500,000 was a, a good number. The, the shell square footage, Hal's been working with somebody that he has to build a similar structure, that's a solid number. And then Dan, with the interior prices, he priced out some medical stuff, and that 300 dollars a square foot for the medical portion is a, is a solid number, so...
What's included in the shell? That's 70 dollars a square foot.
The windows, the doors, the insulation...
The siding?
Yes.
I don't think that's an accurate number, there's no way.
That was confirmed this morning.
That is confirmed.
I will eat my hat if we get that.
What flavor would you like it to be?
Strawberry, for sure.
I've never seen wear a hat.
70 dollars a square foot is late 1980s, early 1990s, square footage, home prices.
When was the last time you built a shell, a metal structure?
A year ago.
Okay, and what was your square footage cost?
It was about 90 dollars a square foot, just a shell, and... And that's without any upgrade to the roof or insulation in the roof? So is that going to be included in this at 70?
According to Hal, that is ready to build the interior out.
All right. I don't believe that number even a little bit. Not even, not even close.
I'm going off our professional architects quote.
Okay. That number to me, when a spec home is $120 to $200 a square foot right now, I don't know how we're going to do $165 a square foot for interior on a commercial building when traditionally, commercial prices are about double what home prices are for, to build. And then medical grade, so a custom home is $250 a square foot and medical grade is typically triple what homes are. So those, I'm pretty suspect of those numbers.
Alls I'm saying is if you trust me.
I realize that you're just taking what you've got, but I don't believe those numbers for a second. I'm sorry, I just don't.
Okay.
So this goes back to what I'd asked before. And that is, do we have to put this out to bid? And I'd like to see the bid prices to confirm what we're actually spending.
I've just given you the numbers that I have.
I totally respect that, that like you're going to a subject matter expert. But I have built, the building that I helped with last year was about 6,000 square feet, a little bit under, about 5,500 square feet. And it was bare bones. He had brother-in-laws and help coming over and it ended up being more than that. I'll drive you to the building.
I can't argue with you. I'm just telling you, these are the numbers that I have as of...
I totally respect that. I'm just saying, there's no way. I've been building since the mid 90s and I just don't know how we're going to get that done commercially, medical grade. And I want, like, I'm in favor of this, but I want us to have, be making educated decisions off of good numbers. And $70 a square foot, I cannot fathom that unless we were building in 1990.
Fair enough.
I know nothing about metal.
Now, notice, I have no idea about the equipment. I have no idea about the equipment. But there is one thing in this world that I'm good at and that's building and selling real estate.
Building's not, that's not my forte. I can do it on the inside, know nothing about the structure.
Then part two of that, given, given that discussion.
He says with hesitation.
I have no hesitation here. I'm ready to roll. I don't care. So talking about, one of the things that I've said from the very beginning is I don't want to do this if this is going to cost the taxpayers of Bannet County any additional funds. And I appreciate our friends from other counties wanting to make sure things are done fairly and that everybody carries their own burden, which is one of the reasons why we set this up as a regional facility so that we're all in this together. And the subscription dues, that year-one subscription dues is about equal to the amount that all of you, all the 17 counties that we've talked to have in their budgets for autopsies for the year. So that gets us pretty close from a cash flow perspective. The toxicology reimbursement, histology reimbursement, those are over and above the standard autopsy costs. So you go over to Ada County now, you have like $2,300 for your basic autopsy and then you have your toxicology and histology fees on top of that. So those are the reimbursements for that. Tori?
Question on that. Toxicology, when Ada County, they bill us through NMS, are we going to be set up to a similar thing or is it going to be a reimbursement program?
I'll have to defer to...
You know what I'm talking about? Because before, we used to pay Ada or...
It's billed separately to you, right?
Correct. Now, everybody has their own NMS account. So when we go to Ada, they automatically send talks off and they say, hey, this is Bannet's. And NMS bills me straight instead of billing me on my...
So because, I know what you're saying and I know why we had to do that.
Right.
And the reason that we had to do that in Ada, because we did that a couple of years back, was because we started getting billed for Ada County toxicology that wasn't coming in for autopsy. So in a sense, I started getting invoices, as an example, for like your January tox, even though you didn't bring it up for post, right? Even stuff that you ran for tox only. So that's why we had to split those off because it was an NMS billing issue. This, with the subscription model, that's included in your total subscription price for a basic or an expanded. Okay? So that's your, let's say if your budget's $20,000 for the year, which I know yours isn't, but it's $20,000 for the year, that's going to include your tox and your basic or your expanded panels. Now, if you end up on a case that's going to have additional, like some of those cases, Lucky, I know you had one a couple of years ago or a year and a half ago that had, what, $2,000, $1,800 in additional tox? If we have something like that where we're looking for specific rat poison or, you know, cyanide or something that we're not going to hit on a basic or an expanded, that's going to be done by authorization only and then the county will have to pay for that. So meaning, if you've paid your subscription, but then you're like, look, I got, we need to run everything under the sun because we've got whatever, you know, something under the kitchen sink, literally, we think.
As a parameter, what the subscription will test for outside of...
Correct. If it's out of our scope of our basic or our expanded, then that'll be a discussion back and forth and then we'll decide together, are we ordering this or are we not? And that's an additional cost. Because as you know, some of those can run thousands of dollars. Yeah.
So that's the total income that we're looking at. The A budget, that 510 includes the price for the doctor and the benefits. It involves, it includes the price for a tech and a facility manager. The tech and the facility manager are contract employees, the only employee we would have, not employees, contractors, excuse me.
So that's not in A budget?
I put it there because they were personnel, but they're not, the contract would go down to B budget, yes. So that's a mistake on my part, but the cost wouldn't change.
Cost is the same.
And then the A budget, the only thing in the A budget then, based on that, would just be the doctor and his benefits or their benefits.
Bottom line does not change.
Bottom line does not change, yeah. And the B budget is all the costs associated to perform all the autopsies for the year. So as you can see, for the first few years, we're growing and the subscription cost is based on population, using the national statistic of one autopsy per thousand. So Bannet County, when we get these subscriptions where they're supposed to be, would be able to do up to 90 autopsies a year. You would be able to do up to 50 autopsies a year, whatever your county is. So that's why I'm saying, we're trying to remove that barrier of, well, budgetarily, we can't do that. And so by everybody paying maybe just a little bit more than they currently are, it allows everybody to do more and move that barrier. So that's the whole idea behind the subscription. So the subscription price, working through the model yesterday, you'll see an increase every year for the first four or five years because I didn't want to hit everybody with that year one. You're going to go from here to here. So this allows us to step it up and use some of the money that the state gave us to subsidize it while we get to that point where we should be. And then after that, the subscription model shouldn't change very much, maybe a minor three to 3% a year, 5% a year to handle inflation or things of that nature. But you can see that in year, let's see, yeah, year seven, seven through 10. And again, it's a model, so I believe those few numbers like Jason believes are construction numbers, you know, it's year seven, who knows what's going to happen then.
Five years, the state should have it.
Maybe, maybe not. So, or at least paying for it. Because that's a concern that I have is what's that going to look like? If we put our ARPA money into it and then the state ends up taking it, are they going to take it or are they going to pay for it?
They would have to pay for it, would be where I would be with this.
We hope.
Otherwise, we lose $4 million. But I don't know if the state's heading that way to be a medical examiner or state or anything like that. That's a discussion that nobody knows the answer to right now.
That's not what I'm hearing.
Oh, good. Yeah.
They can't, it's too expensive. It is, honestly. Because then you're going to have to turn around and do the exact same thing up in Kootenay and the state's going to have to pay and base it. And quite frankly, with the shortage of the doctors and all of those staffing issues, I, that's not at all the direction I'm hearing at all. I mean, they're pretty against that from what I'm hearing on an ME system.
And so again, the thought process, I know there's been an initial worry that we couldn't go from our, our region right now is doing about 90 autopsies a year. The initial worry was there's no way we're going to go from 90 to 120. I've had conversations with Bonneville County about this. They said they would double what they've been doing with the proximity and the subscription model. You've already talked about substantially increasing yours. So I think the reality of hitting 120 in our first year is fairly realistic.
Well, Franklin County questioned me at a meeting I had earlier last week, so...
Well, and I've heard from a lot of the coroners, Teton County, some of these different areas where that's a, you know, five and a half, six hour drive. And she made a comment to me that I've had several this year, I could autopsy, but I'm not making that trip when I can run tox. And so part of, part of that is that travel challenge with these folks too. I know that that is a big factor when it comes down to autopsy and or not is, you know, is it worth the four, five or six hour drive?
It turns into two days.
It does. I think that it's, I mean, these guys kind of hit on it a little bit as far as the drug overdoses and everything. And realistically speaking, we're kind of, we're taught, we're trained to that if it's a potential drug overdose, we're going to autopsy regardless because if it walks like it, talks like it, we only have so much information other than running the toxicology. The risk that we run when we only run toxicology is by the time we get it back, we're four to six weeks unless we are doing this other program where we are. But that being said, you get your results back and it pops zeros. Well, then by that time, you've released the body to the funeral home and it's been cremated or buried. And we put the county and our offices at a huge disadvantage because we led with what we thought and rather, not only for the prosecution, but just to be sure. That's the way we're...
Liability wise.
Right. I mean, that's the way we're trained. I mean, we should, the standard is that if it's a potential overdose, then we automatic autopsy.
And Tori, that's a, that's a very, a very good policy, you guys. I'm so glad that everybody's doing that. We actually had a 21-year-old with a heroin needle in his arm that we were all convinced was going to be a heroin overdose, right? It was on scene, needle in his arm, was at a party and he came back clean. And had we not autopsied that kid, family, I mean, we had a huge problem with families. Yes, that's standard and needs to be done in all the counties.
Well, and I was at a funeral last night, yesterday, I'm going to another funeral today and stuff. The sooner we can get bodies back to families, that is important to me. That is a criteria.
I would really echo, agree that, you know, our job is to provide answers so that families and friends can find closure. And, you know, almost every case that probably all of us do, that's the question that we get from families is why? What happened? And, you know, that's what we're trying to figure out and that's where an autopsy can provide that if we just, we just don't know. So...
Well, this is on our agenda for a decision on Tuesday.
Yeah. And I was wanting to push it to Tuesday because I think originally it was set for an action item today, but because of some of the discussions we had yesterday and Commissioner Crowder not being here, we pushed it to Tuesday, which gives us an opportunity to visit with the doctor on Monday and see where he's at as well. And for me, I think it's a, it's a pretty low-risk venture for the basic fact that if we get two or three years into this and it's not working and it does look like it's going to cost the taxpayers of Bannet County money, which again, I am against doing that, we can shut it down and we still have a building that we can use, whether, you know, we move the coroner into it or the sheriff or whoever, we have a building that we can put people into.
That's kind of my thought here that I'm sitting here stewing on. Okay, so a couple of questions on that, $70 a square foot. Does that include any infrastructure? It doesn't, I'm guessing.
What do you mean by infrastructure?
Like conduit for pipe or whatever for drains that are going to need, and concrete? Does that include concrete? Or is it basically going to be a steel skeleton on footings?
What I've been led to believe and correct me if I'm wrong here, Braden, but that number that you see for all the construction is to open the doors and be ready to go.
But the $70 a square foot though, probably doesn't include concrete or any infrastructure.
I think it includes concrete and the exterior actual shell and steel footings. And I believe Dan confirmed yesterday with Hal that the membrane for the new was in there as well.
So maybe something we should do is have, you get with Hal?
And Hal and Dan both had family things or they were scheduled to be here.
So here's my thought though. Because I hope that I'm wrong with that $70 a square foot and that we could do that portion of it. If we can, then I would advocate for building it bigger and making it cost more. And some of the remodel and things that we're doing to Tori's office this year use that money to help expand the building because in the end, if we can build portions of it at that price, then I would go for all the square footage we can.
And I'll tell you, like I told Dan, I committed to 3.5, so I am not advocating me to...
Right. So I just... Well, if the idea's been floated around that we go a little bit bigger and then potentially in the future, we have room for either growth in this program or evidence storage, Tori's office could be right there, talk about convenient, if we move him out of where he's at now and build him an office up there.
Exactly, what Dan proposed as well.
Something like that, so...
And Hal just texted me back, said that does include foundation and slab.
Okay.
He's online watching, so.
Okay. All right.
And that, the $300 number for the medical grade, the medical grade's only a third of the building, so that was an average because it's actually closer to $500 a square foot, but that's really just the lab and the cooler.
I see.
And so that's why it met at 300 because the rest of it was back down in that lower $100 range, so...
But maybe it wouldn't hurt to just have another set of eyes look at Bannet because if we're going to go bigger, we're dedicating ARPA money. So it's better to dedicate more and not need it than not dedicate it and try to scramble for money.
Why is the green, why is the green highlight?
Because that's his proposed. The 7,000 was my proposed because based on the conversations with Dan and Hal yesterday, that 7,000 was a size I felt we could hit and stay within the 3.5 million that we had committed to, so.
Okay.
And that, that's why I told you that I wanted to hold off on those other...
And I'll tell you that I will have a conversation with Dan.
Because of this.
And we will talk. And we're not going to pave the road and dig it up. So expanding and having a facility that is going to last for a lot of years would be my goal.
We don't have any new buildings in Bannet County. And so I know Dan always talks about, we need a new building. And so if we can do it for that cost, I would say we do 8,500 square feet or more and leave just that portion almost unfinished, just build it to build.
That's what we talked about yesterday with Dan and he cleared that with Hal, that yes, we could build it bigger, leave the other side or whatever unfinished to come back with other monies or whatever down the road.
So just as...
Dan was traveling down that path.
Okay. Just as a comment to that, when we went through all of this process with Ada County and the facility that was there, it was actually cheaper for us to add 10,000 square feet to that facility and leave it unfinished for, you know, and we did it as a 50-year facility so that we would never have to build it again virtually, right? So that in the next 10 to 20 years, if we experienced the growth that was predicted that we were going to experience, we could just expand that out and still, you know, be able to keep up with the case volume as needed or use it as storage for our EOC departments or whatever was needed. But that with this facility, we designed this with two main autopsy suites in the main, or two beds in the main autopsy suite so that we could run like an inspection and an autopsy at the same time, which a lot of the docs will do. And then we did an ISO decomp room where we can do our infectious and our decomp cases. And you have to have that separate suite, that's an accreditation requirement, it's have to be separated out. And then the cooler is about a 20-body cooler once we're stacking it and about a five to 10 on the freezer. But doing a rough finish on that is, when we bid that both ways, is actually cheaper to do it and leave part of it shell.
One thing I forgot to mention real quick, on the donor connect line, you see, that's a, that's a pretty small number. In our original talks with them, we felt like we might be able to get some more money out of them. They got a new... They got a new CEO, and he changed his mind a little bit. So, that number that is reflected there is, is a very minimal number, based on some information from them, on what they thought would be their actual ability to do, based on the numbers that we provided them for suicides and other type of things.
And I'm going to make a comment on that, I really feel like we need to go back to the table on that. I, I know the kind of volume that they do, I know the volume that they're anticipating to come out of these folks' cases, that's really, really low. We, I mean.
And again, I got that, I got that number yesterday.
Yeah, we need to.
And we didn't have a chance to go back and forth. So, again, these numbers are hot off the presses. Some of them are, some of them are pretty solid, some of them might have to question a little bit more.
Yeah.
But.
I really feel we need to fix that.
So, Mr. Chair, I apologize for not having this put in the packet, but since we weren't going to make a decision until Tuesday, I felt we were okay to bring it here and discuss it this morning.
I have one question, because this is going to be service all of the counties, you know, on the eastern side. Has, has there any been proposed by commission to meet with all of our other commissioners to ask for, uh, monies from each one of our individual counties to put some skin in the game? And I, I don't know if that has ever, has that been done? Is that worth looking at, to have a, an Eastern Idaho commission meeting to say, hey, look, we're going to, if the decision's made to move forward, but do, can counties, based on their population, could they contribute $100,000, or $50,000, or something to that nature? Have we explored that at all, or is the state against that?
We've talked about it a little bit, but we haven't approached other counties yet for that, because this has been so fluid for the last year, that we haven't had a number to be able to say, here's what we're thinking. And so now that we're, we're to this point in time, we have solid numbers, I've talked with them all about the subscription model and things of that nature, and, but we haven't talked about the other. We also have talked about having a regional board run this, and, and everybody's kind of on board with that. So, we're working towards that skin in the game, but we haven't broached the write us a check question yet. And again, we haven't totally decided we're going forward until it'll be Tuesday, and once that question is, then we go, because now we have something to talk about.
Well, if that comes up, I mean, I know if I can just speak for myself, I'll go in front of our commissioners and say, look, this has now been approved, and this is where we're going, and this is going to benefit us in all these different ways. And, you know, that might be something that.
Well, if we're going to go with the regional board, I would expect some buy-in from our county.
Just, I'm just looking at, trying to offset that.
Did you have something?
No.
Oh, I thought you did. Okay. You can if you want.
I just don't know what my commissioners are going to think as far as trying to put in money toward the construction, because, you know, commissioners, and I'll include you guys, always have the little thing of, like the thumb, uncontrolled. So, if my commissioners are going to put in $100,000, they're going to have some control.
And that's why we were talking about the regional board, which would be comprised of three or four commissioners, two or three coroners, a prosecutor, and a sheriff. So we have cross-section, and somebody from ISU to represent the, the educational component.
Right, I think that's an excellent idea.
So, that's the thought process, we're, we're waiting for kind of this final pieces of the puzzle.
I might be backwards, but I, on the doctor portion, we're still looking at using locums? Is that correct, or?
Depending on what we, what we find out from this. We'll know Monday.
We'll know Monday.
And the price in here on the, the doctor, that 510, does include using some locums for a little bit to get us to that, so we do have some locum prices figured in here.
On the locums, are they contracted?
Yes.
For the time being? In their contract, is there a portion that discusses them being available to testify?
Yes, I thought I saw something on that.
Yeah.
So I think that was something that came up.
All of that is covered.
As far as, yeah, if you got a locum that shows up, does the autopsy, and then we can't get him to testify, that could create issues, so.
No, that part of it, Tori, is a condition of their employment within that company, and he's very, I mean, I've checked that out nine ways to Sunday, and.
And that cost is above the.
I'm sorry.
And that cost is.
Well, that does with all of them, yeah. I got to look in there. I don't think, it wasn't an additional cost, was it, for?
Yep.
There was a daily, there was a daily one. I don't, I just don't remember.
Matter of fact, we did, I looked at that, Ada's actually came down this year than what it was the previous.
Well, not really.
No, the cost.
Not really, if you read that closely, it did not.
As far as their doctors?
As far as them testifying?
Right.
Yeah, because the previous cost was $300 a day, plus like $100 an hour after the first four hours. The new contract reads $500 an hour.
I think that's flip-flopped, right?
It's, it was more expensive.
It was like a four-hour minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah, the new contract was more expensive.
But also remember, there's subpoenas, too, so once they do an autopsy, they can also become a factor in this, to what's going on, so.
Oh, for sure, it's just a matter of making, like getting them here.
Right.
No, that works.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are we allowed to share this with our divisionary?
It's public knowledge now.
If it was in a public meeting, it's on our records. Yeah, we didn't go into executive session, how we want Commissioner Crowder to be able to view this and, and have his part and say, so Tuesday will be a, a good day.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen, appreciate that very much.
And we'll be calling on you further. All right. Christie, you're up.
Mr. Controller, the first item I have before the board is signature, or commission signature and authorization for me to electronically submit the FY23 equitable sharing report. These are dollars that we get on our cases, the money is held in an equitable sharing forfeiture account, and then as the cases get settled, the monies get disbursed. We're required to use those monies for certain files, so this is just a report of those. We had $1,248 beginning balance for fiscal year, we received about $8,299, and we had spent prior year's money, so we have a current balance of the monies we've received this year. So if you could approve this, it's an electronic filing report, so once you sign this.
I'll authorize you to submit it.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the equitable sharing agreement and authorize the controller to submit electronically.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This one. Are there two pages?
I just need the signature page, which is page five.
Two, three, four, five.
Next item I have before the board is the engagement letter with Whitely, to do our annual audit. A couple of things I wanted to point out is, the fee for the engagement will be worth that $47,600 for the basic audit, they're going to add $5,000, we will be required to do a simple audit this year because of all of the ARPA funds we've spent. Because we have a new GASB standard that we need to implement, that's GASB 96, that's for the subscription-based IT agreements that we do. They're going to charge an additional $1,000 for that. So the total is going to be $53,600, we budgeted $50,000, so this is going to exceed budget. I will look for some potential money to cover that if we need to, but we should be able to cover the simple audit of $5,000 using ARPA funds. So I'll bring that to the, at the discussion meeting that we have next week or the following week, and then that should bring us back in with, within budget. They did add in paragraph four, where, and this was just an option, which is why they threw it in here, charging $5,000 if we wanted them to write up the financials. I am very anti having them do that, because I like writing up the financials, but they wanted to include this in case we have a nightmare year like we did this year.
Well, I've, I've been happy with them. And I, I, I mean, after so many years, I think we should adjust and go to somebody else, just like we did before, but with where we're at and everything that's going on right now, I think that they're on top of it, and they're helping us. It, it's been a positive thing, and.
I love them.
And if we ever do decide to make a change, we need to start researching it before the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
So that there's time to adjust.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I, I love working with Teresa, she's great, Fred's great, their staff that they bring in are good.
Well, they, when they was here the other day, I mean, they have answers and help.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's good, it's a good situation.
There could potentially be some other increases if there's additional work that they need to do. Positive is, the more work I do, then we don't have extra costs. FY22's audit we did just because of the Tyler implementation, but we try to keep the cost down as much as possible.
I just have one quick question, and this is a non-accounting question, because I don't understand, what is the additional disclosures required for the GASB? A thousand dollars for the additional disclosures, what, what does that look like, or what does that mean?
So basically, we have to revise our financials, and it, and there's additional, so like when we implemented the leases, we had to add new tables to the notes, and we had to add information within the financials. So every time we have a new GASB implementation, it changes our financials, because I have new requirements of what I've got to do, we'll have new authorization schedules, we'll have note disclosures explaining what the leases are, we've also got, so there's that section. And again, like we'll have, these will include items, I think they're going to have to hit the fixed assets schedule, so it's additional pieces that are going to have to be pushed into notes, mostly the notes. The first note you're going to see is, we implemented GASB 96 this year. And then you'll have the other sections that go for the details of what we implemented, and the description of what it is and all that stuff, and how it affects Bannan County.
Cool. And I, I want to be clear, I appreciate that they broke it out like that, instead of just sticking it in the total price, and you don't know what you're buying. I very much like the line item that they gave here, it's just, I just didn't understand what that was about, so, thank you.
And next Thursday, I'll find out what other implementation of GASB implementations we're going to have for the following year. Hopefully none, I need a year off.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the Whitely proposal, contract proposal as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Looks like that brings us to our resolutions. Resolution 202344, this is March 2023 alcohol licenses. Resolution 2023-45, tax cancellation request. Resolution 2023-51, another tax cancellation request. Resolution 2023-57, May 2023 alcohol licenses, and resolution number 2023-62, June 2023 alcohol licenses.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve resolution 2023-44-45-51-57 and -62.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, looks like next we have Board of County Commissioner minutes for October 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion, I would move that we approve the minutes for October 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, with that being said, we'll be at recess.